There it goes. All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the workshop meeting for the Parks and Steel Planning Board Wednesday, February 7th. We do have a quorum, so we'll jump right into continued discussion on ordinances and around LD 2003 land use ordinance updates. So I won't butcher an introduction, but we do have Lee from SMPDC with us tonight. He was the one that authored a lot of the ones that we've seen already, answered some of the questions that we had, and then we invited him here just to kind of go through and because we had questions around what pieces that we, you know, we had authority over and what pieces that we did not. And so I know, because I know some of the, like, the minimum square footage, we don't have authority over, but some of the maximum, I think he said we do, so.
Yep.
So, welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So LD 2003, I don't know how much you folks have all studied it or understand it, but I'll kind of give you the quick overview, and I'm sure you do have questions over some of the stuff I put in here. But LD 2003 basically sets up three, three different types of housing development that were required, all towns are required under the law to accommodate. The first one, the easiest one for me to explain is the accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are required to be allowed wherever residential development or residential zoning allows residential development. Accessory dwelling units, the minimum lot, minimum building size under the law is 190 square feet. Maximum, as mentioned, is up to you. I throw, I just threw some numbers in here, they're all over the board with the different towns that I work with. Some of them are percentage of the home, so if you wanted to say up to 50% of the home, primary home on the property, then it will vary depending on the square footage of the home that's already on the property. Or you can limit it to, in many towns, we limit it to 800 square feet, and I noticed I did look, you're, you do have a minimum dwelling size of 600 square feet. It's kind of interesting only because I think, and maybe David, you might have been involved when you were codes, the 600 square foot really is dictated by living space that the building code, the MUBEC building code in the state requires, so that there's certain square footage for bedrooms, certain square footage for habitable living space. And that, actually, I think it's 620 now or something like that, but, you know, I won't fret over that. So we can do accessory dwelling units to whatever you want to do or however you want to do it. Then there's the, what I call the two to four unit piece. And the two to four units basically is depending on where, where you are in the town, and I think I called it out here, that in the rural, in the farm forest zones, excuse me, you'd allow no more than two units on a parcel. And in the, and there's a reason for this, but in the V, in the VR zones, the village and village residential zones, up to four units. Now, chances are, you're not going to see four units on a parcel in the, in the village zones, because the way it's written and the way many towns have looked for it to be written is that if the minimum lot size, and in your case in the V and VR zone, it's .46, so it's about 20,000 square feet, little more than 20,000 square feet per unit, then, or for the, for the main minimum lot size, then what we've said in many, many other towns is that you need to double the size of the lot, size of the minimum lot size in order to accommodate two units. And we would, could do that for, in the four units as well. So that means that, you know, you're looking at, someone wants to try and do 80, four units in the village zone, they're going to need at least 80,000 square feet. Chances are, your village zone areas don't have many lots that are 80,000 square feet. So, and the reason for that, interestingly enough, is to kind of limit the amount of, excuse me, areas that are going to have more than one principal residential unit on a parcel. And that's what I've seen from many towns wanting to do that. Then the third piece of the law is the affordable housing development piece. And that's for someone that wants to come in and do, for example, a 12-plex development or more, multiple apartment complexes on a parcel. Now, you folks are a little unique in that you have to, at least in your ordinance, accommodate that. A lot of towns don't have to.
Right.
But you do, because you have a small HUD, Housing Urban Development federally designated area, right up in the corner between, where am I, between, you know, Porter, right up in the downtown area, or the, up where the mill is.
Right.
And so...
Because it doesn't go down to the mill, though, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so because of that, you're required to at least accommodate the affordable housing developments. And in allowing affordable housing developments, what that requires under the law is that if someone comes in and says, "I want to do an affordable housing development," there's a number of components that go with that.
Right.
One component is that you would have to allow the density to be two and a half times whatever your base zone density is, so let's just say it's a, it's an acre. You would have to drop that down to, you know, like, the 20,000 square foot threshold per unit to allow that development. In return, though, the developer has to guarantee, and there's mechanisms that are put in place with that, guarantee that 51% of the units have to meet the affordable housing definition under the federal guidelines. And those, I've put those in your ordinance so that it's spelled out. And every ordinance that we're doing has that same very language in it. So those are the three component parts. Oh, well, and, and also the parking standard, and I kind of corrected it, I went in the wrong direction with my, with my math when I did it for you, but it's actually, you can't have more than .66 parking spaces per unit. It's kind of a crazy number. It's what the state established when they established the law.
And that, sir, that's under the affordable housing development?
Yes, yes.
And the ADUs?
No.
No, just the, just the affordable housing development.
Correct. And in the ADUs, I think I also added that, ADUs, you're, you're not allowed to require additional parking. I would suspect, especially if it's a standalone unit on someone's lot, that the person's going to want a parking space, but you can't require it, but if they want to do it, have at it. So those are the three component parts of the law. And what I tried to do was as much minimal damage as I could to your ordinance and get everything in that needed to be put in. And I know that there were a couple of questions, and we can certainly go through those if you want to do it that way, or you want to just ask questions of me and we can...
No, I think the big ones that we had questions on were the 800 square foot, so what I took from what you said is that 800 is a number that was put in there, we have authority over that, can make it higher, lower.
Yes. When you say higher, yeah, when you say higher, just, just keep in mind that we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
And maybe, you know, here, because your minimum dwelling unit size is spelled out in the ordinance as being 600 square feet, it might make sense that you say no more than 50% of the home on the parcel, of the primary home on the parcel.
Okay.
Someone comes in with a 3,000, if someone owns a 3,000 square foot home, you know, a 1,500 square foot accessory dwelling unit really isn't all that big, comparatively speaking. Yeah, I mean, it really depends on what you want to accomplish.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, like I said, a lot of towns go to a maximum of 800, some have been 7, 750, but a lot haven't gone over that size as an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
It's really meant to be, it, it's kind of fashioned after the old, you know, mother-in-law apartment.
Right.
It's really kind of meant to be a, like, a one bedroom, maybe a two bedroom.
Yeah.
Maybe a two bedroom, so that if there's a mom, a mom or a mom and a, and a husband has one child and they need something affordable, you know, constructing an 800 square foot unit is going to be a lot more affordable than them trying to get into a, you know, a 1,500 square foot ranch. So, you know, you, you tell me what you want for numbers, you don't have to do that tonight.
Right.
But tell me soon so that we can plug it in for your warrant whenever that may be coming forward.
Yep.
The other thing that I had in there, I'm surprised you didn't question it, was saying that the minimum size is 410 square feet. The state law, yeah, the state law actually says 190.
Right.
The reason for the 410, and again, this, I just, in some cases, I lift stuff from other towns, because I'm not sure what some people want. The 410 comes because tiny homes, tiny homes can be no bigger than 400 square feet under state law. And some towns didn't want tiny homes to be allowed, so we went to a bigger threshold than what the tiny home is allowed to, and said, minimum, minimum size for an accessory dwelling unit is 410. The maximum dwelling size for a tiny home is 400. So people can't bring in a tiny home and put it on a parcel. And there's lots of issues why we try to do that, but it can certainly go down to the 190 if that's what you want to have for minimum.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can, we can play with those numbers, you folks, you know, talk amongst yourselves and, and decide what you want to do. Also, on that page, there's a footnote that I've got on the bottom of the table, which is all of your shoreline zoning table.
Yep.
Under the state law, the shoreline zoning performance standards will apply or are required to apply to ADUs and the two to four housing units, actually to all of it. So if you've got an existing home in the shoreline zone and someone wants to do a tiny home, and the minimum lot size or frontage requirement is the 200, 200 feet of frontage, they have to now have 400 feet in order to accommodate an accessory dwelling unit in the shoreline zone.
Wow. That's really restrictive.
Yes, yes. I think they were trying to balance allowing it in the shoreline zone, but making it restrictive that it's...
Restrictive for example.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, then you're into lot size challenges than that.
Certainly do.
Yeah.
Certainly do.
So, so when we had asked about the 190?
Yes.
When we did the questions, and so you had said that the minimum size allowed is 190, the maximum was up to the town.
Yep.
So is the, am I hearing you correctly that the 190 is also up to the town?
It's up to the town, you can't go below 190.
Correct.
You can set a higher minimum if you choose to do that.
Okay.
And he just told you why?
Yeah, no, I understand, but that was, that was, I took his comment earlier that the 190 was the law.
That's how I...
And that we could do, because that was the conversation that we had last time, so...
I apologize.
Oh, no.
I miscommunicated that, but...
That's why we wanted to have you come in.
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's, it's been a challenge. We still read the law, you know, all the time and try to understand and interpret it because it is not real clear in many cases. And then it's a matter of, all right, how do we make this work? You know, because every town's different and everybody wants something different, and it's like, what can we do and what can't we do to make it work?
So, size on ADUs is sounding like anywhere from 190 up to what makes sense, might be less than or equal to 50% of the master unit.
Yeah, other towns have done that, and I think, you know, that's, that's, when you get to the, you don't want to go over 50% if you, if you can't help it simply because it's an accessory dwelling unit, it's not meant to be the, the two to four unit.
Right. And with the tiny home situation, if we went with 190 square feet as our minimum, that might subject us to tiny homes.
Yes.
Yes.
With a 410 square foot.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So let me, let me expand that conversation a little bit for you. If you chose to go with the, like, the 190, which would allow a tiny home, what I would want to do, well, depending on what you want to do, what I would do is expand the language to require a tiny home or a home between the 190 and the 410 to be on a frost wall or a full foundation.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because if people trailer in a tiny home and they don't do that, they can pull it off the lot before the 180 days of the year are up, and they're not going to get taxed on it. So you want it to be a full unit.
A permanent.
A permanent full unit.
Okay.
So something to think about for you.
Does that also include trailers or manufactured homes?
No, manufacturing, it's, that's an interesting question. Manufactured homes comes under a completely different certification and requirement. There is a state law regarding manufactured housing. But that question was asked of me in another community, and there are smaller mobile homes, trailers, that would meet, you know, in some cases, the 50% or 800 square foot size. If they wanted to bring that in and make it permanent, they could do that. The, the only thing that you, you know, you have to be aware of with the accessory dwelling unit is they still have to meet all of the setback requirements. They can't encroach in setbacks. So if they can bring in a, you know, a, I don't know, what, a 16 by 24 unit and make it work, if you don't have a problem with that, then you can allow that as an accessory dwelling unit if it meets your other standards.
That would require a foundation?
Well, again, we can build it in to say that it must be, you know, on a permanent The two to four unit issue is interesting only because you still have the whole septic system issue.
Mm-hmm.
And state law, what we do in a lot of towns where we have a lot of sub, regular subdivisions occurring is, and we could, and, and they can do it here just by requesting it as part of their permitting process, is if they're going to do a separate septic system for the separate house or even for the separate ADU, there needs to be a separation of 100 feet between well and septic systems on the property. And a lot of times we'll just, you know, say, "Well, on your plan, you need to give us 100-foot circumference and make sure that we, that you can meet the setback requirements," which is a state, state law, under the plumbing code DHS requirements.
Is that in here someplace?
It is not.
That's...
It is not.
That's a very important item to have in here.
Yeah. Is that in our, that should be in our ordinance, though, right?
It should be in your ordinance. I didn't, I didn't do a thorough...
Not for an ADU.
...deep dive in your ordinance. Well, it should require just in general a separation of 100...
Right.
Between the two, septic and, and well.
We're on the same lot.
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, actually, joining lots, yes, in the subdivision.
Sure, it needs to be directed towards a, on the, on the lot where you're doing it.
Yes.
For joining to, yeah.
Yes.
You can't.
David's correct.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's in our ordinance.
No, I think our ordinance just says you'll abide by state's provisions.
And if it says that, then you're covered because state plumbing code requires that.
Like that, that's okay, I guess.
Yeah.
From a, from a septic standpoint, that's all ours does, refers to the state...
State law.
The state wastewater, subsurface wastewater laws.
Yeah, and that is the state requirement, there's 100-foot separation.
Well, that would be covered.
So the state sees these ADUs as having separate, separate septic?
So that...
And extra units attached.
So that's an interesting question. It can get complicated. I try to hope that we don't want to make it too complicated. If someone has an existing septic system, of course, on their property, septic systems are designed by the number of bedrooms.
Right.
So if they have a three-bedroom design and their main house is, is a two-bedroom, or claim that it's a two-bedroom, and it's a three-bedroom design that they put in, and they're going to put in an ADU, they may not need to expand their septic system, and they can tie in, there's nothing that says they can't tie in.
Right.
If someone is going to do, for example, a, this is where it'll, it can get complicated. If someone wants to do a standalone accessory dwelling unit, which is allowed under the law, and they want to do their own septic system, the issue becomes where it's an accessory unit, you don't want it to become a primary standalone unit. And one of the towns that I work with on a regular basis, we actually built in language that says you cannot create an HOA or a condominium association that would allow for ownership of the two separate units and actually require them to sign a statement to that effect and record it in the registry. So that, and, you know, I don't think you guys, you folks will run into that problem up here, but this is in a, you know, one of the coastal communities where a lot of that kind of stuff is going to happen. And so it was like, okay, we need to, we need to make sure that, safeguard it so that you still, you don't get the two units on a, on a, two primary units on a parcel. You know, because again, even though it's, it's set up as an accessory dwelling unit where it's freestanding, it could become a primary dwelling unit at some point. So there's, there's lots of little things that you need to think about weaving around, but I really don't think you're going to get that complicated up here. I would hope not. Let's see, where do we want to go?
We'd asked about adding ADUs to subdivisions.
Yes.
And then...
Great question.
I brought that up with Reagan.
Yep.
And she had mentioned that it may, or the understanding of how that was to be applied is, may have changed.
Um, yeah, and Reagan and I, she's one of the, the folks that, we, we talk a lot about this all the time. We're both in, very involved in the housing issues in the region. So, um, where are we headed with that? ADUs?
ADUs in the subdivision where it says single-family home only.
Yes, so here's the difference. The state law says that wherever single-family homes are allowed, you have to allow an ADU.
Right.
I'm kind of paraphrasing, but that's what the law says.
Yep.
If someone comes in and does a subdivision, every house could have an ADU.
Wow.
There's nothing stopping that from happening. The bigger issue becomes watching the lot sizes in a subdivision to make sure that they're not creating lots that are large enough to accommodate two units on the parcel.
On one lot.
Yes. And the reason for that, really watching that close, is because your impacts are going to be different.
Oh, yeah.
Your stormwater's going to double, your, your trip generation for your traffic could double, and, and those are the types of things that you want to watch for. You can do that as well, as you look at subdivisions, knowing that every lot could have an accessory dwelling unit on it.
So how does, if you have a subdivision and they put ADUs attached to the primary?
Yep.
That primary and that ADU, isn't that now a multi-dwelling unit?
No.
Nope.
No.
They're attached, but they're separate?
They're attached, but the state law says you recognize them as an accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling units are allowed to be in, in the home, attached to the home, or standalone from the home.
Right.
Okay. So how is, so let's say you had a townhouse that, you know, in an urban, more urban area where you have two townhouses in one building, is it one an ADU now, or could be?
Could be.
As opposed to the primary?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very vague about that because if you're in a townhouse situation, that's where you may have condo association documents.
True.
HOAs, those trump the law.
Okay.
So if your HOA or your condo association says one primary family, residential family unit on a parcel, or one unit per family, then you probably cannot have any, an ADU.
Okay, all right. And the utility companies are on board with how this is being designed as far as having to do billouts and hookups to these ADUs?
Uh, that's a great question. The law does not talk about that, and we certainly have not gone down that road.
Okay. Since like your, your internet, cable internet, telephone, those all specifically can't be installed to more than one unit unless it's a multi-dwelling unit, and now you have to find something different than a multi-dwelling unit, but you guys haven't talked to them about any of that.
Nope.
Nope.
CMP?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So not all, but the majority of subdivisions end up as HOAs?
Today, yeah.
So their regulations, if written correctly, will trump the law?
Yes, yes. I live in an HOA development, and it's very clear that it says one family per lot.
Yep.
No, no additions to accommodate.
I have them bought mine and two, and they both say the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a, that'd be a good point, to make sure we have it in ours.
Yeah, I mean, if you get a subdivision of any significance in the future, you know, the, and I think that's a question to ask, is are you going to have an HOA? And if you're not, you know, we'd like to see deed restrictions or something that limits one house and no ADUs per lot.
And no ADUs.
Yeah, and you can do that as a condition of the approval.
Mm-hmm.
And require them to, to deal with that.
But that probably needs to be in their ordinance, though.
Um, so it's a catch-22.
Yeah.
You put it in your ordinance, and I, you know, the, the joke I always live with is that these developers stay up all night trying to figure out how to get the, get around the ordinance.
Okay.
If you just require them to put it in their deed as a condition of the approval, then there's no, no way around that for them.
What is our ground for doing that? If you have something in writing or on, could it be on the application? Now, I don't know. What do you think, Aaron? How are we going to make sure that something is controlling that? That's the issue.
Yep. So the way, the way I, the way I look at it anyway is that you have the, you have the right under your police powers, and I hate using that word, but that's a word that's commonly used with, with land use. You have the right under your, under your police powers, health, safety, and welfare issues, that that is, that's the typical type of condition. In fact, you could actually make it a standard condition of approval for every subdivision and just indicate that, you know, and they must provide deed restricted language that allows no ADUs on those lots.
Could that, could that possibly be added to our application for, the application? Could that be put on that?
You'd have to make it part of the subdivision ordinance.
Ordinance, yes.
In order, you can't, can't require something that's not part of the ordinance.
But you can just condition the project if it comes forward with that. And then what they would do is they put a note on the plan, and then when it gets recorded in the registry, it's there for...
That's a losing case, that's just my opinion. I'll take you to court and I'll beat you.
No, you won't.
It's my opinion.
No, I know, I know. And, and my, my, living this for 40 years, subdivision development and whatnot, is, no, you won't. You won't, you won't beat it.
Okay.
The only way you beat it is if the planning board changes and you come back and you want an amendment to have that taken out, and the planning board, whoever it is at the time, says, "Yeah, okay, we don't see any reason why you should have that note on the plan," and amend the plan to remove that note or that requirement, that's the only way it's going to get beat.
Always wait around.
They stay up at night, I'm telling you.
Yeah, so then, so the... Yeah, so then, so the affordable housing.
Yes.
Developments.
Yes.
It's pretty much going to be non-impactable. We don't have.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot in the census designated area.
Right.
Large enough to accommodate.
Correct. The only, the only properties that I'm aware of that, that it would be a stretch, again, looking at that little tiny. Dot on there would be the mill, which may or may not fall into that category. And the other one that I actually worked on a project for the town years ago was doing a review of the old school. Up on.
The old school?
Yes.
Yep.
Where someone had bought that at one time and wanted to put a number of apartments in it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, those are like the only parcels or properties that could accommodate something like that. In that, in that area.
Now, the mill being so close to the river, that might be an environmental resource issue.
Very well could be, yes. Yes, I mean, well, and the biggest issue is that, you know, trying to find out, try to find a location for a septic system that would accommodate units. I, I have a little bit of history on that, on that project. We've been working on that one for a number of years with you folks off and on, so.
In the law, I'm sorry, Dan.
No, you're good, okay.
In the law, it stated that the state has goal, tenure, or has goals, annual goals for the next 10 years.
Yep.
In fact, it states that sections three and seven require that state establish statewide and regional housing production goals.
Yep.
Set forth.
Yep.
What is the goals, housing goals for our region per year?
We haven't established any as, as the regional planning agency and the state has not at this point either. There's nothing, there's, there's nothing that says how many units or what are the goals for affordable housing development. There's nothing that's been done on that at all.
Okay, well, in a way, that's kinda good, cuz they would have to come up with like food, you know. Resource goals as well, based on bringing more people in, wherever they may be coming from.
Correct.
With the national population decline, I don't know where they're coming from.
Correct.
Are they everybody coming across the border? We're declining in population.
Oh, sorry, not, sorry, growth, uh, reproduction growth.
Oh, okay. That makes sense then.
Yes.
But we're going up in population.
Recently.
Yeah, we got a lot of in, in migration occurring, but certainly procreation is down.
And so on the, alright, thank you for answering that. On the affordable housing development part.
Yep.
I believe there was an income level.
Yes, that is a.
What is the income requirement currently?
So that, that's gonna vary by, basically by town.
And by year, too.
And by year. It could change every year. And that's a, that's, that's a HUD designated. Income number and it's. There's a whole formula that you have to work through in order to, to do that, if it's going to be done. The developer would need to come forward and say to you, it's going to meet your, your requirements based on the formula in this area. What's the income here? What's the 70% of that?
Okay, so HUD has that formula.
Yes, yes, actually, main state housing would have that information. But it would be, really be a developer's requirement to, you know, provide us, provide us that information as part of your project.
Okay.
And it could be different.
Yes.
When they, they first break it to the board to when they start breaking ground to when they get people.
It very well could.
It's a different numbers.
And, and let me tell you, the other complicated piece of that is that there's only very limited. And I mean very limited organizations that are gonna hold that information. Because when, when a developer comes forward and says, I'm gonna do 51% of my 12 units. And make them affordable, they have to stay affordable for 30 years.
Wow.
Under the law. And so that means that if someone meets the qualification, whether they're purchasing or they're renting. And they come in and they're, they're there for a year, two years, five years, when they leave. And the next person comes in. That has to be, they have to meet that affordability requirement, whatever it may be at that time.
Okay.
So someone has to track that. Not you guys. Not you guys. It may be someone like an investor housing, or it may be main state housing. Those are like the, the places that are gonna have repositories, if you will, or keep. Excel spreadsheets on every project and every unit and. Every time it comes in and every time it goes out, a renter comes in, a renter goes out. What's the affordability index now? It's gonna be very difficult to track. Yeah.
30 years, that's a long time.
Hey, I got one town that said 30 years is not long enough. We wanna make it 99 years. In order to make it truly affordable. Because they said 30 years is only a generation and as far as we're concerned, that's not long enough to keep an affordable housing unit.
You're assuming that the build on the house will last that long?
It's normal. You couldn't build a house.
No.
They're also, you know, also talking about, you know, a coastal community that's trying to find a way not to allow the impacts to happen. And there's nothing in the law that says you can't go more than 30 years. So they're saying, we want it to be 99.
Other questions?
I have more of a statement, maybe more than a question as devil's advocate. Because everybody seems to be geared up to prevent this from happening. Or to limit the scope of it.
Okay.
But we're seeing more and more. Multi-generational housing. Seniors that can't afford to be on their own. Be creating such a restrictive environment that you can't create.
Like a place for your mother to live.
And in the same sense, when I'm looking at that, I'm looking at these, these regulations, it looks like we wanna push development into. Areas that are already highly developed, like the village area. And I'm assuming that's so that they can't do it, whereas we're restricting it on farm and forest and.
Rural.
Rural areas that can't afford the spacing. I mean, at some point, we do have to consider, you know, taking care of each other.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's a very valuable comment. You know, this, this bill was. Well, I mean, I can, can say a lot of things about, about the bill when it was developed. They wanted, the legislature at the time wanted this very bad and they pushed very hard to get it in, in that session. And I, you know, like I said, we, we read it first year it was in place. Paul Schumacher, Reagan and I would read it and read it and debate it. I don't know that it was written. With a lot of those types of thoughts in mind. And I know that we were very vocal at the time that the bill was going through and. And our phone was ringing constantly in the last 72 to 48 hours of that bill being developed, saying. Can you guys live with this? Can that, will that work? Can you live with that? And we didn't have a lot of time to really think about it, but. It, you know, it, it went through. And until someone wants to, you know, make amendments to it or do things like address those issues. But there may be other things to do within your local zoning wardens as well that could help accommodate that. Just because you're, you're having to live within the confines of this law. For those types of things doesn't mean that there may be some other things that you can do locally to accommodate. Those kinds of situations. It's a matter of really thinking it through and.
I would just urge your guys just to consider that, you know. What would happen if your child gets older and can't live on their own and you wanna add an accessory dwelling unit to your home? And you can't.
Well.
Or your mom.
There used to be something called an in-law apartment, in-law unit. I don't know if that's still a term used.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Ordinances and codes.
Yeah.
So I, I think I would develop one of those.
Yeah, I mean, that, that in some instances really gets under the accessory dwelling unit.
It does.
Is the modern version of the in-law apartment.
So, yeah, so in his situation, I wouldn't be able to do that if I had an 8 acre lot with a primary unit.
Sure you could.
8 acres you could, but I mean, what if you had an acre? You could. Established and you, you know.
As long as.
I'm not saying let's overdevelop every little area everywhere. What I'm just saying is I. To make sure that we're enacting an ordinance that protects overdevelopment, but at the same time that we're still taking care of our community.
Yep.
And not restricting things, I mean.
The hard part is on an acre having two different units with septics.
Yes.
If that's the case.
If it's. Correct, but they may be just trying to add something attached to the building and tie into the septic.
That would be an accessory dwelling unit.
Yep. Most situations they do may require.
I mean, as I'm getting, as I'm getting older, I'm seeing more and more people of my age that are having parents living with them or coming to live with them. Or they can't live on their own or shouldn't live on their own.
Yeah.
Yep.
It can be a space infringement, so the. I personally believe that you should have some ability to develop for them.
I agree.
We also have the younger generation coming back too. They can't afford.
That's right. That's right, absolutely.
With, with the rising costs and inflations that we've experienced in a turbulent. Financial environment, I'm just concerned about. I'm concerned about valid people and.
Very valid concern.
You know, I'm concerned about people being able to even stay in their homes.
Yeah. I would say. From, from a standpoint of what you're, what you're thinking about. I would say that step one would be to get this in order and see if we can get it through town meeting. Step two is to revisit that issue and see if there are other things that you guys can do.
Well, I believe, I believe and someone can correct me if I'm wrong on page 20. Out of that might be that the planning board may permit zero front and lot side setbacks if the board determines it appropriate and may waive.
Right.
That's a, sure. That's a sub-note that we have that allows us.
So it allows us to reduce lot dimensions.
Yep, absolutely.
It does.
That, you know, that language remaining in there will allow us to make exceptions.
Right.
I hate saying make.
If a certain requirement's met, then you can make that exception.
Right.
Yep.
You know, if every other requirement is not, but you need, you know, 20 extra feet in order to afford to put your mom.
Size of the issue shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I discussed that with you one time, I think.
You did.
Yep.
As long as your butter doesn't mind.
Those footnotes in there gives us some flexibility.
Oh, definitely. Definitely, footnotes like that, you know, go a long way to help that. Absolutely. I mean, I do have one town that, that I was working with and. They were just the opposite cuz they have a lot of very small lots in their village area and, you know, then you have to allow. Allow for the ADUs to occur and they're thinking of, you know. The village area becoming cramped.
Yep.
Village area becoming overbuilt.
Yep.
The village area having impacted stormwater issues because of additional impervious area.
Right.
And, you know, guess what? There's not a lot they can do about it cuz of the way the law's written. But it's a, it's a valid issue, especially, again, it's, it's a coastal community. A very tight village area that, you know, has historic preservation issues. And now all of a sudden, you're allowing, you know, that and, and build and the least we were, we're talking about doing was. Requiring stormwater analysis to be done on these very small lots to see what the impacts may or may not be. And looking at, having to look at design considerations to make sure that the units. Meet the intent of the, the whole village concept, so. Yeah, it can get very complicated.
Just surprised me that it's directing this all towards village.
Yep.
Versus areas that have usually larger lot size.
Well, the larger lot size issue is the two to four units. That's what they tried to accomplish there.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean, in many towns, it's not up to the four units. It is here. Because you have that little blue blot on your, on your town that meets the HUD requirement. But in a lot of towns that don't have that. They only have to do two units, up to two units. And if they don't have septic sewer systems, then they definitely don't have to go to four units.
So not to digress, but the little blue dot we have does encompass the empty Milliken school that's sitting there.
I, let me put it this way.
Designated growth area.
Yes. Let me put it this way. When I, when I look at that, you tell me what that encompasses. Because I don't have a map any, any smaller.
I just think of that when we don't have any senior housing or.
Right.
Affordable housing in town.
I mean. You know, from, from, from that standpoint, let's put it this way, if it's a way to take advantage of the situation.
It would be nice to see growth on our main street that would actually benefit the community.
Right.
What's that, the Milliken?
Milliken School. I believe I have the right building cracked over by the Village General.
Want to sit there empty, nothing?
Yep.
And that's a big lot.
Yes.
But even without the footprint of the building, you could put several small senior units.
Sure you could, yeah.
Again, I had, I had worked on a project, reviewed a project for you folks a number of years ago on that, in that school.
Are you thinking independent living or assisted or all the above?
Oh, the above. I just, I, I think all communities should have some sort of. Senior resource, if I don't, we have any or that we're moving towards that.
Senior living.
Do you get a chance to build any of that kind of thing into your comp plan? Do you know? Talking about it. Yeah, you are, okay. Okay, good, good, because, I mean, if you don't, it makes it just a little more difficult to try and move in that direction. But if you got even a little bit of language that encourages that and your goals, policies, strategies. Then, you know, you're, you're golden. And it gives you a lot of flexibility to be able to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about, we have a lot of trailers in town that they put on fairly large lots. They don't have foundations, they skirt it.
Yep.
Put in a, what, an ADA or whatever you call them.
A handicap ramp?
That needs a foundation.
ADU.
Oh.
Yeah, ADA, there must be something. What do you do in that case? I mean, where the actual unit that's on there is not up to par?
That's, that's non-conforming grandfathered.
Okay.
You, you, you're not gonna make them do anything different than what they have there now.
Okay, alright. Now, if they added another unit on that lot, then you can make them do something about that one, couldn't you?
On the additional.
Yes.
Yes, sure. But again, if it's a manufactured, if it's a manufactured housing or even a mobile home. There are certain code requirements or codes that would necessarily require them to put a full foundation. They could do skirting and, and not do anything. Yeah.
Even, even if it's considered an ADU?
Now, and that, and if, if we build language into the ADU issue. That requires it to be frost wall or full foundation, then you can require it.
Okay.
But if someone's doing a mobile home on a single parcel of land. There are state laws that actually trump local.
Right.
Regulations.
I was just thinking of what's already there.
Yep.
On that parcel of land, they wanna add an ADU. As a second.
If, again, right now, the language doesn't say anything about. Frost wall, full foundation, the building code may, but again, we're, we're, we're kinda in a gray area because. That issue that I spoke about with that really pertains to someone bringing a tiny home.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Onto the property.
Not a mobile, not a manufactured home.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's all kinds of.
Tricks.
Nuances, issues that. You'll never cover it all. Never.
Guess we'll have to wait until somebody requires it to really learn more about it.
Wow.
Well, and after the complan's done, we're gonna have to go through everything and take a look and see what. You know, what we need to update or what, you know, make sure that the use table makes sense for today. You know, there's some, especially considering we're adding accessory dwelling units, but we already have things on our use table like. Two-family dwelling and multifamily dwelling. So. Those will have to be better defined or, you know. Maybe updated to make sure that it matches. And we also have one for accessory structure, so. Where, where.
But I did propose a, a definition of an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we wanna review that definition and see if there parallels any of our other definitions for the terms we have. If it doesn't, great, we can just add it in. If it does, then we gotta debate how we wanna handle that other term.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, because if you had somebody sitting here that was proposing a duplex. Well, we have a duplex. well, we have a duplex allowed use.
Right.
So, you know, they could be here as as a as a allowed use duplex or are they here as a allowed use.
Primary.
Accessory accessory dwelling unit. And then is it also a multifamily dwelling? You know, so.
Yeah.
So there's got to be, we've got to, and and the the other challenge that we've talked about in complan is that for uh, where anything is, where I can't remember where the uh, where the what the word is, where the wording is, but it basically says that if there's anything, if there's any question about it, it's up to us. We just get to determine as a board. And so, you know, rather than, rather than having the, you know, strict definitions for for each of them and it puts it on us to make a declaration, which probably isn't the best idea.
Usually, a lot of that's left up to to the code officer, actually, because.
Right.
Because if the code officer makes um, a determination on a particular issue, then whoever um, is sitting on the other side can appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. Um, which is, you know, and a a better way for you to handle it than putting that burden on you folks.
Agreed.
The code officer say no or yes, and then whoever wants to appeal it can take their appeal to the ZBA.
Yeah, it's uh, for any land use not listed on this table, the planning board shall determine which use type is most similar to the nonlisted land use.
Yes.
And determine appropriate procedure and type of permit required.
Yep, I remember that language.
So if somebody came in today with an ADU, we don't have a definition for it.
We would do our best to.
We would have to, we'd have to pigeonhole it into one of these.
Gotcha.
And, you know, and even if it was something more complicated than that, it was the question that we had.
Right.
Because if some somebody came in today and said they wanted to do wind farm, obviously, we don't have that as a allowable use. We'd have to figure out which of these that falls under.
Right.
And I I don't know about you guys, but I'm not comfortable with us having to make that determination. Uh, is I think it would be very difficult to do so, so.
Yeah, um, just because, you know, you used a wind farm as a as an example, I worked in another community that um, um, a solar um, project was proposed and that kind of issue came up.
Yep.
And um, it got very contentious because we were talking about a, like a two hundred acre solar farm. We weren't talking about a twenty acre. And um, anyway, I I was charged with ending up writing a fairly significant ordinance um, for that and the use was not a listed use.
Right.
In the zone, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was the one Reagan was talking about where it was a.
Reagan worked.
Utility or, yeah.
Yeah.
Utility was in there.
Yeah.
But the developer was arguing that it was something else.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Reagan and I worked on that um, quite a bit.
Yeah.
She she had to update the their existing comprehensive plan to include language that would um, consider a solar farm of that size and I was charged with writing the ordinance to go to town meeting.
Yep.
That'd have to be in a commercial zone though, right?
No.
Oh.
Nope. It would be in a zone that wherever you wanted it to be.
Depends on, depends, it has to be an allowed use.
In.
And then whatever, you so you'd have to figure out which of these you're making it and then if it's an allowed use in that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
Alright.
So they may be bringing something before us, thinking it's one thing, which is what the situation was.
Yep.
Thinking it's one thing and we say, oh, no, it's this other thing and it's not allowed.
Right.
And so they were like, and they're arguing that it's, well, actually, it's this other thing and according to this, it is allowed, but I have to.
Right.
Come before the planning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's that's, and then it's up to the planning board to determine.
Right.
Which one makes the most sense and then, yeah, so that was the that was the concern with that one. So we brought that up in the complan that we need to eliminate that little caveat in the in there. That in leaving it up to the CEO is probably the best.
Absolutely.
Best way to do it. That way it's.
Yep.
Person making a decision and.
Correct.
They can appeal it, so.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I have one that's outside maybe that complex. You know anything about what CMP is doing? We have a solar farm, obviously, waiting five five years now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you have any inside information on?
I don't. I don't. I got, I I, and the only thing I've dealt with with solar is writing the ordinances that either allow or don't allow um, and what to allow where. Um, the whole interconnect issue is something I have not dealt with at all. The latest thing, though, that I will bring to your attention, talking about solar, talking about utility, is there was just a recent court case here in the state that said that um, solar farms, early on, people were saying um, pigeonholing the use as a public utility because it was serving the public. And the court case said, um, unless there is already an interconnect to serve Central Maine Power, it cannot be considered a public utility. So, um, it actually killed a, it it killed a project down in Elliott because of, that was the court case. Um, Elliott said it was a public utility and some of the neighbors challenged it. And the court said that, no, it is not a public utility because they did not have an interconnect agreement with Central Maine Power serving the public. So. Yeah. Yep.
I think.
Yeah.
You've answered most of my questions. I do have one last one, I think, and I apologize if it's been addressed. Uh, the owners of the principal structure must reside on the property.
Yes.
Either an ADU or the principal structure.
Yes.
Is that law?
Forever? Is that at the time of establishment and who administers that?
So that really, that is not part of a law. Um. It would really become a local issue and again, it doesn't have to be in there. I try to and and try to make it, in trying to make it easier on us as well as the towns, we usually just try to lift as much as we can from other. So that came because what you didn't want to have happen is these properties become Airbnbs.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, oh, great, I can put a second unit on there and either, you know, and then I can rent both of them.
Right.
Um, and so the intent was to try and make sure that the owner of the principal structure is on the property. Now, whether they choose to live in the downsized and live in the ADU or live in the principal structure, that would be up to them, but it was to make sure the owner is on the property.
And it's that make sure part that I'm questioning.
Yes, that's always a difficult part because the other part of that question, Dave, is that um, in other, in 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 other towns that I've worked in, um, you know, the question becomes, well, what if the guy lives there or the the family or whatever, lives there part of the year and goes to Florida the other part?
Primary residence, which you'd have to put down.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm assuming that would continue on if you sold the property.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it would run with the land.
And then in that same section, it said, should the owners of the principal structure be found in noncompliance of the standards contained in this section? The noncompliance shall be considered a violation of those ordinance.
Yep.
So that's the part that is the enforcement side of.
Exactly. There's always a heavy hand somewhere, right?
Yeah.
What are you gonna do, though?
I know what I was gonna say.
Tear the ADU down if they aren't gonna move back?
It says, uh, subject to fines and penalties.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Go to court.
And the ADU show unit shall be discontinued and the certificate of occupancy revoked.
Oh, there's, I didn't read that.
There there's the, that even heavier hand of that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I went to that workshop that Hillary and Ben presented over there.
Yes.
Um, they were saying that, um, I had the same question about the owner of the. But they also were saying that you can create a zoning district that doesn't allow housing.
Well, you can create a housing, uh, that's an interesting one. I hadn't heard that one from them. Um, you can create a zone that is a single-family home zone, except that the law says wherever single-family homes are allowed, you must allow accessory dwelling units. So I'm not sure why they were trying to say something about that because the law is very clear.
Yeah.
So you can, yes, you can still create a single-family home zone, you know, a one-acre zone in the primary single-family homes and then other uses, um, and not have multiple resident, not have multifamily development as part of that zone. But the law clearly says you must allow accessory dwelling units.
So in terms of a duplex, though, um, well, I think of a duplex as being two side-by-side apartments, but in if one of, if, I think, as you were saying, if one of those wanted to be an ADU, doesn't it have to be only fifty percent of the size of the main dwelling unit?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Or or whatever you've established as a.
As a municipality.
As a municipality for the maximum size. Yep.
Okay. I mean, if somebody was building a duplex, there, unless there were other require, other restrictions that they couldn't meet, there would be no reason to make it an ADU.
Right.
They could use it for their parents or whatever.
Sure.
But to put that restriction on initially wouldn't be required, assuming it meets all the other.
They'd be, they'd be better to be coming before us as a duplex instead of an as an A, as a single-family plus an ADU.
Yes.
Yeah.
Tricky.
Oh, very tricky.
Yeah.
Very tricky.
Yeah.
I didn't get bald and gray twenty-five for nothing, you know? It's, yeah, it's it's been, um, uh, very difficult to try and figure everything out and and every town is different and every town wants different, um, different ways to look at this stuff, so. So.
So does the ADL, ADU go on the foot, part of the footprint of the primary?
Only if it's attached.
If it's attached, okay.
If it's a standalone, it can go anywhere as long as you can meet the side.
Yep.
Your yard, front yard setbacks.
Do the occupants of the ADU have to be owners or can they be renting?
They can rent.
Long-term rent?
Yep.
So could I be a development company and approach anybody with a primary unit and offer to build the ADU and be the management for that unit? Fill it with people, be the landlord for it? What would prohibit me from doing that other than the primary owner?
I don't think there would be anything.
Because this law kind of allows that to happen.
The law, yeah, the law is silent on that, so.
So somebody could make a big development company, go through a town and just add these rental ADUs on if people are willing to allow that to happen?
Sure.
Yeah.
And still sell them and have a primary.
No, couldn't sell them.
Wouldn't sell it.
Can't sell them.
No, I don't.
It would be a rental.
No, no, I mean, the 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 complete unit, they would have a primary.
Yeah, yeah.
An owner would have to be there.
Right.
But they would have a, like a homeowners association kind of a thing?
Almost, but it would be an independent landlord of some type that could say, yeah, I'll build this.
Management company.
Yeah, you know, manage everything for you. I'll fit people in, I'll pay for rent and may and maybe I'll work a deal for ten percent of top. You know, something with you or the.
I'm sure someone will come up with something like that.
So, okay. Wasn't sure if there was something built in yet to prohibit that.
Not unless you wanted to.
And that's sort of the nature of the law, right, is to create housing?
Yes.
So so if someone's willing to go through the work of approaching individual homeowners in the town and do that, then.
So, yeah.
It it's allowed and, I mean, it'd be no different than.
Which is.
Four or five landowners getting together and saying, hey, we want to do this, you know, and do this shared and.
That's a great intention for the state to do that, to prevent, to provide more housing, but without more resources that go with each house, it it doesn't seem logical or wise.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean.
Throwing that out there with food and electricity.
But, um, and 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 you said something that's very true.
Fuel.
Um, you know, think about, think about what, everything we've talked about tonight and everything you've looked at. The only true affordable housing piece of this law is the affordable housing development piece.
Right.
There's nothing that restricts ADUs. I mean, someone could build an ADU and 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 rent it for three thousand dollars a month. There's nothing that says they that they have to make it affordable.
Exactly, okay.
Um, and the same with the two to four unit piece. There's nothing that says it has to be affordable.
Okay.
Um, the only piece is the affordable housing development piece where they're gonna guarantee so many units will remain affordable for thirty years. Um, the intent is really, as you mentioned, is to put housing stock into the market um, in the hopes that the market will dictate costs.
Yep.
This generates more tax.
Yep. Taxing code. So I'd say, um, you know, you mull all this over, um, come up with some of these, you know, little nuances that you want me to fix.
Yeah, I created a list of uh, of items that I think that we'll go over in our meeting because there'll be stuff that we'll have to vote on because obviously it's the content side of it, but, you know, max, maximum lot size, the foundation frost wall slab requirement piece.
Yep.
The uh, uh, prevention of it becoming a primary dwelling, so the ADU becoming a primary dwelling, that piece of it.
Yep.
And then the HOA or ADU limits for subdivision.
Sure.
Or putting it as a uh, condition of approval for the deed language.
Okay.
Um, and so we'll uh, get all that voted on, approved in the next meeting and then uh, and then we'll get any other edits and questions we have.
Works for me.
Cool.
Awesome.
Nice. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me up.
Yes.
Yeah. Maybe here and.
How many more workshops will we have to have on this issue? Do we have to have any more at all other than just try to handle it with meetings?
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know that we're gonna need to have another workshop. I mean, you know, assume that, uh.
I was looking at the timelines. We gotta have this before the uh, meeting. It's not very far out.
We've got to have this before, we're gonna have this approved by the town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, by June thirtieth.
And will the complan be finished by then and approved?
No.
So we're gonna do this before that?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, this you have to, you have to have in place.
This has to be.
There's already been one extension.
Okay.
Um, to the law for this. Um, the law was actually done in two thousand twenty-two and said it needed to be done by July one of twenty-three. And a lot of towns said, there's no way that we can get this done. A lot of towns are still trying to think about, oh, we have to put this in place, I mean, now. Um, and and the legislature went back and amended the law to say towns that have um, council form of government, I'm paraphrasing, but towns that have council form of government and can approve them without going to town meeting have to have it all and had to have it all in place by by January first. Towns that go to town meeting have to have it in place by June thirtieth.
Gotcha.
And and so you folks are on that timeline. Um, I do want to, while I'm packing up, there is another thing that I I do want to raise for you, separate from this issue. Um, I think someone asked the question, you asked the question when you first came in about the floodplain maps. Um. You have to have your updated floodplain ordinance in place by um, July seventeenth.
Okay.
Um.
Which on that.
Yeah.
That webinar that you're doing.
Good.
That you're doing next week, so.
Okay.
I would have gotten that information then, so.
Yes. Um, and FEMA is really dictating that. It's not the state, it's not anybody else. Um, FEMA is dictating that and saying, um, if you don't, you risk being suspended from the, from the um, uh, flood regulations.
Yep.
And of course, if that happens, then no one can get a, you know, mortgage.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, well, we'll likely have to piggyback on to any special.
Sure.
Meeting.
Yeah.
Include that in the ordinance, it's an ordinance change.
Yeah. And so just a little background, if you don't know about it, why, why that's happened so quick is that this actually all was supposed to occur back in two thousand seventeen. Um, and there were, there were some, some coastal communities that did not like the way the new flood maps looked. Um, and I don't mean looked, but that they thought that there were areas of incursion that shouldn't be um, in the flood zones. And so they hired an engineering company to do all the analysis and and appeal to the federal government on that. And um, all this time, the appeals have been running, um, and analysis being done. And what happened was FEMA said that we're not, you as a town can appeal that, but the maps um, will be delayed for the entire county.
Yep.
Until those appeals run out. And the appeals ran out in, I think, October.
Okay.
And now they're saying everybody needs to get their ordinances done and in place by July seventeen.
Gotcha. So we benefited from coastal York County.
For a while.
Okay.
For a while. Um. Yeah. So that's another, you know, another scramble for us to work with a number of the towns to.
Beautiful.
Get their ordinances prepared and ready to go.
Floodplain maps, have they been drawn?
Yes.
Yeah.
Floodplain maps were done back in seventeen. Floodplain maps were done back in 17.
So do we have copies of those yet? No.
Um.
I haven't seen them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, they're out, I'm sure they're out in the, in the universe, but
Yeah, they are. You can go to FEMA, FEMA.gov.
Could be.
Federal Emergency Management.
That had to be part of the adjustment we need to make to our ordinance?
Yep.
To include the maps or not?
Not to include the maps, but there's some content
That's from language.
Yeah.
Yes.
That we'll have to update, that will have to be, so that'll have to piggyback. Basically, we'll have to two-bird, one stone with the LD 2003.
You should have gotten an
Yeah.
You should have gotten an email from either Janet Parker or Sue Baker that sent along a draft of the ordinance that you need to put in place.
The only one I got was the, the first note, notice I got of it was the webinar from
From us.
from Brandon.
Yep.
Brandon.
Reagan.
Reagan.
Yep.
I work with Brandon.
It could be sent in my email.
Okay.
I thought I forwarded everything.
Didn't there, wasn't there something about floodplain stuff that went out today?
That's the webinar one, yeah.
Yeah.
For the webinar for next week.
Right. And Janet Parker and Sue Baker from the state is covering on that.
Would York County Emergency Management have copies of that map?
No. I doubt it very much. Yeah. This comes, this all comes through Department of Ag, Observatory of Forestry.
Observatory, yeah.
Yeah, Planning, Planning Department. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's one, that's one, I mean, that's one of the
And I, you know, if you don't have the maps,
Yeah.
Sue Baker or Janet Parker next week will be able to
Oh, yeah, yeah, you haven't done that yet?
Go to find them.
Where to go.
Yeah, that's good, that's pretty good information.
Lee?
I'm Jen, I wanted to say, hey, how are you? Hi, nice to meet you.
Same here.